I just want to say I really do appreciate all of the candidates for running. If you haven't run for office before, it's a challenging task. It's difficult. You have to end up having pretty thick skin and listen to everybody. So no matter what position, I really do appreciate all of you that are running. I know what you're going through. So I appreciate the audience for being here. As Natalie said, we'd like to hear from the candidates and not from you guys. And so just keep that in mind. I know at times, depending on the questions, the emotions can run high, but just keep your thoughts to yourself. We appreciate that. What I'm going to do as we go through the court, first, you'll have a minute to introduce yourselves. So I'll tell you what to do. I'm going to start with George, in this case first, and then next time we go to Randy, and just go down the line and repeat. That's the easiest way to do this. So we'll just start by the, we have one minute to introduce yourself and vote why you're running for council. George?
Mayor, real quick, here's our timer code.
Oh, yeah. My recorder's going to be our timer, so I'm going to rewind my mic and we'll do what he says.
Thank you, Mayor Dooten. My name's George Vaughn. I'm running for place two on Colleyville City Council. My family moved from Fort Worth to Colleyville summer of 2015. We have family here, and we always knew this is a great place to raise a family, but we didn't know we're moving to the greatest city in America at the same time. And what the city had done for us in a very short time of being here, I felt the need to serve. And within a year or two, I got on the Historical Preservation Committee. It was the first committee I started on. And then in 2019, I joined the Planning and Zoning Commission, which I'm still a commissioner there to this day. Just what the city's done for us, I want to just carry on and move forward. And when I've won on the other commissions, just apply that here on City Council. And I appreciate you all coming today. Thank you.
Very good. Randy?
Hello. My name is Randy Elder. I'm running for City Council Place One. As a 40-year resident, I have watched this town grow and flourish into the residential oasis that it is today. I'm raising two sons here with my husband of 24 years, Kevin. I'm a lifelong conservative, and I became active in local politics about eight years ago. I didn't like some of the decisions that were being made, and so I got involved and decided to support some local candidates that were offering to represent us differently, which was more aligned with my standards. I supported all the current members of City Council, and we'd gladly do so again. I'm totally proud of their efforts and her work on all world halves. Also fully supporting the term limits that this current council introduced and was adopted by our city. So I feel it's my time to step up now. I hope you can support me.
Very good. Obviously, you took two seconds of your time.
And I guess I get one minute of his time? I just want to say thank you to the Republican club for having us today, the opportunity. My name's Bobby Lindhood. I'm the mayor of Tim in Colleyville. I married my high school sweetheart right there. 27 years, we dated through high school, too. We broke up for a year. She couldn't live without me, so we got back together. So I've got two kids. I've got Reagan right here. She's a junior at CHHS. I've got another child at Tarleton. She's a junior. I'm a small business owner. I own one of the top three demolition companies in the DFW area called JR's Demolition. I've been on City Council for six years, five of those as mayor pro tempore. I'm proud of serving those places. I'm running again to continue what we've already started with all these accomplishments that we've already done. We've worked really hard these last six years, and I want to see those accomplishments keep going. And you know, unfortunately, Mayor Dooten has to sit down because we put term limits in on ourselves. I think all government needs term limits, right? That's right. So I pray with my family and the Lord above, I threw my hat and ring again. Thank you very much. Thank you. Amy?
Hi. My name's Amin Galani. And a little bit about me, I'm born and raised in South Carolina. I joined the Air Force right after 9/11. I actually joined when I was 17 years old. And my mom actually had assigned my note for me because I always wasn't old enough to announce at that time. Since then, I was an intelligence analyst, stayed most of my time at NSA as well as deployment to Iraq. And the reason why I want to, you know, run for City Council again is because I think that there's a few things that we could be doing better. I think that, you know, for the most part, you know, we can agree on a lot of things. But as far as like, you know, the way we use our funding or TIF funding, I feel like it could be used in a different way where it can benefit most of our citizens and our children. A little bit more about me, my platform is mostly on being physically conservative, using our leverage to really build business here and be a strong economy so that we build for stability. Thank you for having me tonight.
Thank you. Zach?
Good evening, everybody. I'm Zach Vaughn. I'm running for Colleyville City Council Place Two. Thank you for giving us opportunity to speak to everybody. This is a new arena for me. I'm an educator by trade. I taught science, and I was in title in schools in my previous district when we moved out here. Can't hear me out, thank you. So my wife and I moved out here recently. We've been here since 2019. I've got two little girls, four and six. So I like a lot of the things that the City Council's doing, the term limits, the no new tax revenue. There's a lot of good stuff that's going on, and I just kind of felt called to serve. There was an open seat, and I felt like it was time for me to get out there, get a new place going, get an outside perspective, get an educated perspective to help work with the school board, looking towards that future aspect of just a little bit longer-term planning. I know the TIF is over in 2030, but I'll still be here and so will my girls, so I'm going to find some of the things we do. Those are the kind of things that I'm looking at.
Very good. Thank you. Now that you know the candidates, we're going to go to the first question. The first question is very simple, and it will get more complicated. And you'll have one minute to answer this question. So Randy, we'll start with you. What are your three priorities for the city?
The citizens of this community currently influence policies set by council. So my first priority would be to continue the trend of citizens first. I also want to keep taxes low and continue with a no new revenue rate. Our tax rate was increased by the prior council. The rate was 0.3474 from 1995 to 2007. It was then raised to 0.3559, and it stayed there until the current council adopted the new approach and reduced our rate. Lastly, I wish to maintain the low-density development outlined in our master comprehensive plan. Another fact, 75% of residential development under the prior council was in small-lot subdivisions where density exceeded the 1.8 units per acre allowed by our master plan.
Thank you. Bobby? Well, this is one thing that I'm extremely confident in, is how we use our tax dollars. We've done it wisely. As a matter of fact, if you haven't gotten one, there's a packet up there for Colleyville residents. Right here is a bond that we paid off. We saved over $660,000 by paying this bond off early. Did you know that we only have one more bond, and then Colleyville will be debt-free?
Yeah.
We have worked hard, working through. We paid off all the existing debt. We've had an outside audit committee come in and check our books on us, and we have zero mistakes. That's very hard to find. Colleyville, the town that you live in, has zero mistakes. Our CIP is fully funded for the next five years. We pay cash as we go. We've got so many accomplishments that I would like for us to continue to go forward, and I think that our tax dollars are being well spent right now. Very good. Amy?
Yes. So some of my priorities, well, the top priority would be community safety, economic prosperity, and fiscal responsibility. And when it comes to community safety, as you guys know, we dealt with the terrorist event here earlier this year. And so I want to make sure that we are continuing to support our fire department as well as our police department, because as you guys know, we do have the best police department in the state, if not in the nation. And that's something that we can all agree on. And I want to continue that support as much as possible. The second thing is economic prosperity. I think that we do have an opportunity to make Colleyville a destination city. I think a lot of times we have to go out to maybe Southlake or other towns to do shopping. And I think that there's a great way that we can bring in fine dining and retail that can really attract other people's money to spend here in the city, which would be fantastic. And lastly, it's fiscal responsibility is just to ensure that every dollar that we spend as a city is really meaningful, and that's something that we can all benefit from. Thank you.
Very good. Zach?
So at the risk of repeating my head a little bit here, public safety is probably my top priority. We have a wonderful police department. We have an excellent fire department. But all of our public, our first responders are great. The people who come out, take care of our streets. I've not had a problem that hadn't been answered swiftly since I've been here, and that's rare. So I'm going to continue supporting that. I want to make sure that all of our first responders have modern equipment, excellent training, and that they're getting served the way they need to so that we don't end up with openings. I also want to bring an open door and open mind policy. Not that that's not present, but more public forums, more voices heard. The broader spectrum we can reach, the better we're going to be as a city. So that's a focus that I would like to bring. And then collaboration has a wide range, but the school board is someone we should be working with because strong schools make strong communities, and that's vital for our future. And then working with political candidates to get more funds, like Southlake has money from fine dining to fix things, we should get some of that, too. We've got to watch out for strings, but we need to be reaching out. We need to be seeing what we can do to broaden our horizons.
Thank you very much. So we're going to question three. It's still a simple question. There'll be 30 seconds. Oh, I'm sorry, George. Go ahead. I was thinking, man, I'm running ahead of schedule. That's great.
As far as the three priorities that I have in mind, maintain our low density. That's one of the primary reasons I got on Planning and Zoning. One of the reasons I moved to Colleyville, I think a lot of us can say the same. We have these beautiful large lots, green space, trees, and to protect that, especially as the city continues to build out. Protect economic development along Highway 26 with a lot of beautification projects that are ongoing that a lot of our businesses have had to live through over the last couple of years. And let's get back to them and show them building the beautiful entranceways, the flowers and the trees that the current council has put in to show that we support our businesses. And lastly, I know it's been mentioned a few times, but maintain that no new tax revenue rate that we've all got to enjoy over the last four years. Let's keep that moving. For all of the party doing. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Now we will go to question number three. It will be 30 seconds to answer this third question. So it is, "Do you think the city has spent tax dollars responsibly? What was done well, and what would you do differently?"
Well, I was so excited to share the news a while ago that I went to page three. So I'm going to share my top three priorities real quickly, which sounds a whole lot alike of what I just did. So Colleyville, your neighbors, our businesses, and our friends are first. Always, Colleyville first. Always, I want to look and see if we can do the no new revenue tax rate like we've done for the last four years. And if we need new revenue, new taxes to raise, I will come and tell you why. Every government entity should tell you why they have to raise the taxes. We are unique. My third priority is to keep our density low and 3.5. We always want to have something for our first responders. They love us, and we love them.
So as far as our tax dollars, I don't think it's being, you know, misused or interpreted to be used. But I would say, though, I think we could be using our TIF money a lot better. We have about $3 or $4 million per year that we receive from TIF, and currently it's being used for, let's say, for example, towers, right? We're spending $8.4 million for towers that, you know, there's not much we can do with it except that fact that it looks great, right? But besides that, I feel like we could be doing a lot more. And that's costing $900 per home for that money.
All right.
All right. Again, we've all kind of talked about it, but that no new revenue tax rate is wonderful. I love that we can do that. I like that we're running a balanced budget. I think that's important. I appreciate the new fiscal transparency that we've had recently where you can go online and actually see what the tax rate is. I think that's something that we need to carry forward. Those are things that I appreciate. I'm a little concerned moving forward because I know that we're going to have more people aging out getting exemptions. We're going to have some new revenue things. But if we continue in the manner that we have been, I think we're probably in decent shape.
George?
I think that fiscal responsibility is something that we do better, that our city's done better than any of our neighbors, for sure. We outperform our peers. I mean, it comes down, if you see here. Going back to what Bobby said, I think we had probably the same notes there, but it's something to be sure to be proud of in that we paid off the bond early and got rid of that bond debt and saved the city $660,000 in interest. And that's something to be proud of.
Randy?
I would say absolutely yes. Our capital improvement programs are fully funded with cash. And honestly, I have to say, when I look around this town, I can't complain that our tax dollars are being misspent. We live in a gorgeous town. It's beautiful. We deserve our own unique landscaping and identity that sets us apart from our neighboring communities. So I like what they've done, and also thank you for beautifying my town without raising my taxes.
Okay, thank you. So we're now going to question four. Again, this is a 30-second question. It's going to take me that long to read you the background, so there's a lot of background. And then there's a question. Okay, so listen carefully. Here it is, number four. "Colleyville is a unique oasis in a bustling metroplex. When owned, our citizens overwhelmingly want our low-density protected. Colleyville's residential property owners make up an overwhelming majority of our tax base. People have claimed that bringing in more business will lower residential property tax, but the reverse tends to be true. That is, cities with the highest commercial development have the highest property taxes." Here's the question. "What is your vision for future commercial and residential development?" Let's start with Amy.
Yes. So I think that as far as residential build-out, I think, you know, our city manager, Jerry, I don't disagree or not, but yeah, we're almost at full build-out. So that's not, you know, I think further residential development will be very limited. But really, the commercial development is really where I want to focus on. I think that we need to be able to increase our tax base by more profitable businesses that are coming in. So it could be fine dining, you know, high-end retail shopping, or even tech startups that could bring strong revenue to the city to make it prosper as a city.
Thank you. Zach?
So when you look at the resulting issue, I think that it really comes down to just transparency. I don't think it's necessarily desirable, but if something came up because we are built out and it is something we might have to consider in the future, it's not just up to us. We represent the citizens. They should have a say. I do think we have a fair amount of commercial real estate sitting available right now, and there are a lot of things that we could do to make that more appealing. That's something that we should focus on. And then bringing in new business is always desirable. That's your tax revenue if we can get it.
George?
I think that might be true for many cities, but I don't think that's the case for Colleyville. If you look at, for instance, slide two here on the handout, as our sales tax grown over the last six years, our property tax rates have declined, have dropped. So as much as 18, up to 18%, and that's thanks to our current city council. So that's something to be proud of.
Randy?
My vision for future commercial and residential development is right here. It's our master plan. This is what guides us. In it, it states, "Development must adopt the essence of the community," and that is openness, green spaces, trees. We consistently apply these standards to all development, and that's what keeps this town looking the way that it does. So it's also important to have good people on PNC like George here.
Bobby? I want to carry on what we've envisioned with council for six years. We'll hold the density to 8, 1.8, which means hectare lots are larger. We've been super aggressive for our future business adventures in Colleyville. As a matter of fact, we're working with some people right now for the Southern Six Acres and Northern Gateway. We have concepts that are in this, and you'll be able to see it. Our businesses are filled out to about 96% with developed square foot, and everything will be done to exceptional standards. And don't be fooled about the TIF. I'll tell you about the TIF if you want to know more about the TIF and these towers.
Very good. You guys are doing a great job to stay on time. So we're moving to question five. Again, question five is a 30-second question, but it has a lot of background and then a long question. And for those who came in late, Natalie said, "I didn't have anything to do with writing these questions." So I'm just reminding you that. I saw them late this afternoon after these guys. So here it is, background. "Years ago, under the administration of former Mayor David Kelly, there was a push to rezone our large homesite to higher density, allowing many more homes on these parcels than they were originally designed for or that the master plan stated. This was done by using a new formula that recalculated the way the city determined average density. Citizens stopped by this by electing the new councilor and mayor. Zoning protects homeowners by limiting what neighboring property owners can build. One of the main complaints about Houston is that it is a hotchpotch due to not having zoning." Here's the question. "Considering that Colleyville is near full build-out, would you lean more towards granting higher-density rezoning to property owners and developers, or do you believe zoning is put in place as a protective protection for neighbors and the community, and that rezoning is an infringement on neighboring property owners' rights?" And I think we'll start with Zach.
So this is one I touched on in my last one, but I think the zoning is the way it is for a reason. I like the fact that my property is protected, and I'm pretty much sure the value of it isn't, that that's not going to shift. If rezoning was something that became necessary or desirable or something that we were considering, I think it would be something that we needed to put forward to the community and hear their voice. I don't think it's a universal decision that any council should make. If I wasn't running council, I wouldn't want them making that decision for me, and that goes both ways.
George?
I'm just going to say that the comprehensive plan did set out what the city wants to have going forward through 2035, and that was to not have a higher density. So it's quite simple for me. I'm absolutely against higher-density zoning, rezoning, no matter what the build-out of the city is. And that's one of the reasons why I got on Planning and Zoning, and what I will continue to do at City Council. Thank you.
Randy?
I'm against rezoning, granting a higher-density rezoning. It affects my property value, period. Also, you know, all of this can be reversed very quickly with a change in leadership. We stand for way can go away. So what we have now is low density, and that's what we want.
Bobby? I'm proud to be a part of the team that wrote that comprehensive plan right there. We changed everything to make it where it was sized by lots. It's based off of zoning, lot size, not by the net of the subdivisions and collaborated spaces. That's the previous administration calculated. Under my administration, we will not bust up big lots just so that we can have smaller lots to satisfy a few. We make enough money off of the alarm tax right now, right where we're at, that we don't have to do those things. So I will not be going against the 1.8 zoning. Amy?
Yes, I would also agree that we don't go against 1.8 zoning for low-density housing, but at this point, it's kind of a moot point, though. We are at a full build-out. And, but you know, my subdivision that I live in is actually Saddle Brook, which was built, my house was built in 85, and it's currently sitting on a quarter lot, like a quarter-acre lot. So technically, it'd be considered high-density. So I feel like we can't deem it as, you know, high-density just because I have a small lot, right? But at this point, it is kind of a moot, it's a moot point for any larger lots, many of them.
Zach?
Oh, we're done. Great. Heaven is checking you out, you know?
Thirty seconds goes by in about three seconds.
It does. Okay. So now we're going to question six, another 30-second question. This is, "What is the best use of the Northern Gateway property the city owns at John McCain Road and Highway 26?" George, start us.
I think that the city did a great job in strategically purchasing these tracts of land through the gateway, literally the entranceway that our neighbors from Southlake and Grapevine see from the north coming down 26. By owning that, they could control the zoning on it. The previous zoning lot manufacturer, we could have had 40 acres of warehouses, be the first thing you see when you pull into town. And who wants, who really wants that? We have a great opportunity to build something great, as shown here on pages eight, nine, and 10 of the handout. Thank you.
Amy?
I agree with what he said. I was going to point you to page 10. The city has a vision for this property already, and I totally agree with it. I've watched all the presentations on it, and it includes a park, which all of us want parks, well, I do. I love what they have envisioned there. So I may just direct you to look at the slides on that. Thanks.
Again, we, like George said, we strategically purchased this to keep the zoning. Owning the zoning, like he said, they could have been industrial, light industrial, and there was nothing we could do about it because that's what it was on. But we took over that property, and now we can build something beautiful. Just like on page 10, like you see, there's a park. Our vision is like parks, eating restaurants, just like Amin said a while ago. We want some restaurants. We have, it's open spaces, making some live music, a place for families to come. This is going to be awesome. And people right now are knocking on the door looking, trying to see if they could build one. Amy?
Yes, I actually agree with some of the stuff. I think that, you know, we, this is like our opportunity to really have, to make this our, like a destination city, right? We need to be able to bring in those tax dollars from a variety of different cities for them to shop here and spend their money in our restaurants. And I think this is a great opportunity to bring in fine dining and also great retail, but as well as like other things that actually cater for teens as well. We have parks for, you know, alternate ages and senior centers, but we need to really focus on an area where we can have teens spend their time, such as skate parks and stuff like that.
Randy?
So I really like the master plan. The thing that stuck out to me the most is, like, Southlake has shopping, Grapevine has the wineeries and the bars. I would love us to be the entertainment capital. Like, let's build something like Addison has with Water Tower Theater. Let's bring in music. Let's bring in theater. Let's be a destination for that and get people's money in that way. So that's something I'd love to see built out. Now, when I was at the nature center this afternoon with my daughters, one thing that they would like everybody to know that they're requesting is a splash pad. So whether you vote for me or not, let's vote for a splash pad so I don't have to hear anymore about that.
So that completes that question. So we are going to go to question seven. This is going to get even more challenging. You have 15 seconds for this question. It says 30. No, our moral notice says 15. Where do you go?
Hey, that 15 seconds is like a mile.
15 seconds. 15 seconds. So Natalie's saying, "How should we negotiate this?" We may give you a little extra time. 15 is pretty quick. So anyway, here's the question, simple. "In the past, we have reportedly had corruption amongst city staff." That's interesting to me. How do you, how do we ensure this does not happen in the future? That's a good question. It's Randy.
Well, I had a whole lot more than I'm going to be able to do, but we have two words, the transparency starboard from State Comptroller's Office and the Secret of Excellence in Financial Reporting. I wish I could say more, but there's no time.
What do I give them 30 seconds?
Yeah, let's do 30.
Can I start out?
Oh, yeah. 15.
Okay, I did a little research after what happened in Grapevine, just out of curiosity to see, so I was surprised to see this question. City staff is required to provide physical proof of all purchases.[1662.62] City staff is required to provide physical proof of all purchases. Only managers have credit cards. They can't use those to buy prepaid card or gift cards. Receipts for purchases, they have to have a document what the purpose of the purchase is for. If it's over $3,000, they have to have a purchase order. And another thing they do that's interesting is, they pulled 25 random items to send to different department managers to review monthly, just to see if anything comes up. So, little news for you.
Robbie?
Okay, first, I want to say this corruption did not happen in Colleyville that they're talking about, as far as that. But, you know, integrity matters. It always matters. If it doesn't matter to you, then we got problems. It does to me. When we took office, there was a couple of questionable dealings between staff and even a councilperson who fibbed about the safety on Glade Road. There was another person that had bought some questionable properties, and you know, let's just say they no longer work for the city of Colleyville, or assert for the city of Colleyville. I will hold everybody accountable, just as I do at my job.
Damon?
Yes, I would say that in order to avoid corruption, I think, money independently and independent voice is a critical thing. The second thing I'd say, you know, just to avoid walking forums in any way, because I think we've seen that in Southlake as well. And the third thing would be just to make sure that any project that you're working on, you should be able to refuse yourself if you're a part of the city leadership in order to conduct business fairly and freely.
In a general sort of way, it's oversight and transparency. Like, if you have little silos of people doing their own thing, that's when it's easy to sneak things by. But if you have regular random audits, if you have different people checking in, if you have multiple streams of management checking in on things, it's easier to catch that sort of thing. So, it just comes to open communication, transparency, and randomized audit.
George?
I think the city's already implemented some great plans to combat this going forward. Two of them that come to mind, the financial transparency portal, I think it was mentioned earlier, to allow residents actually to log on and actually see the city's checkbook, which is pretty amazing. Another one that we've all been through as candidates is, in the past, you just really have to disclose your financial holdings in Colleyville. They've expanded that now to Remender, Parent County, Dallas, and Denton County.
Very good. Okay, so that's all the questions. We now have a lightning round. So, you have placards in front of you that say "Yes" on one side and "Red" on the other. So, there's seven lightning round questions. So, I'll read the question, and I get to read the question, show your answer. So, that's, yeah, and so Natalie wanted to ask, if you had a question written down for the council, would you bring them up or raise your hand and we'll pick them up? So, if you have that, let us know so we can get at those. Okay, while she's doing that, here's the first question. Do you think it's okay to appoint people to planning and zoning who may have conflicts of interest, like in the past administration, when a developer was the PNC chair? Okay? Number two, the city of Colleyville has lowered the tax rate for the past six years and adopted an effective or neutral tax rate for the last three, actually, it's four years, while DCSD has raised your property tax every year for the past decade. Some people believe this tax reduction is not sustainable. Can and should Colleyville continue lowering property tax rates? Okay? Four, should a candidate's race be a factor in who Colleyville citizens vote for in this election? I'm gonna read it again. Should a candidate's race be a factor in who Colleyville citizens vote for in this election? Okay, very good. Five, have term limits been good for our city and should they continue? Very good. Okay, six, this is a little bit longer, so it's a little background, I think, and then a question at the end. Under David Kelly's administration as mayor, Colleyville citizens started a petition to stop the planned train station in Colleyville, citing concerns of increased crime, traffic congestion, and over $1 million in annual expense to run the station. Here's the question. Are you committed to not allowing a train station in Colleyville by renewing the ordinance stopping the station? Okay, very good. Seven, Colleyville leadership followed the Constitution and restricted citizens as minimally as possible and did not require business shutdown during COVID. Colleyville wisely did not sign on to allowing Judge Glenn Whitley in Parent County to make emergency decisions for us, like many other cities did. This resulted in Colleyville not having to follow unnecessarily restrictive county mandates. Here's the question. Will you continue to do what Mayor Newton did and follow the U.S. Constitution, not restrict? And follow the U.S. Constitution, not restrict our freedoms and have as few restrictions as legally possible when there is another crisis? Okay, thank you. Okay, that's the last of the round of rest. Thank you very much for being up here. You all did a great job on your time, so thank you so much. One more question. Pardon? Oh, yes. Sam, you guys are good. It's not a question, it's closing statement. So, it is, what should you, what would you, what would you do differently than your opponent, and why should you earn our vote? And this is a one-minute answer. And who did I end up with?
I started last time.
Bobby, obviously.
That's kind of my closing stuff. I'm gonna tell you, if you want to go back to high-density, this is your guy, the guy that's not here. You're right. You want to go back to high-tier water rates? Do you guys remember those? Remember how they were about to tax us out of our houses with our water rates? This was the guy that was in charge of that. Do you want to, you know, have a dictator-type leadership that was shutting down the grandmothers as they were talking in city council, gaveling her three times as she sweetly talked to the city council about something that was wrong? That's your guy. I'm not gonna be that guy. I can tell you right now. I will not, I will put citizens first, and I hope that you'll see the accomplishments that we've accomplished so far. The list is long. I mean, you grab a rack card, that's just, that's just some of what we've done. The list is so long, and they're all good, they're all positive, and they're all Colleyville.
Thank you. Damon?
Yes, so I think the biggest difference that I would bring to the table is actually a different perspective. You know, I see that a lot of folks are saying, "We're gonna continue the good work, we're gonna continue, you know, a variety of things," and there's nothing wrong with that. But me bringing in a diverse, like, perspective and bringing my tech on computer background, but as well as my education, I think that, you know, it's good to challenge things. It's good to have discourse, it's good to have positive, you know, outcomes. And when we challenge each other, we become better. Like, how many times have I gone, like, face-to-face or, you know, from, you know, keyboard to keyboard with Bobby on Facebook, right? Because we have different opinions, and that's okay. And I think that's what I'm gonna, wanna bring is to have, you know, just to challenge what we're working on and bring the best to Colleyville. And of course, you know, I've served in the Air Force before, and I want to continue my service even now.
Zach?
So, I think there's a lot of similarities. Like, there's a lot of things that I really like that are going on, there are a lot of things that I would continue that are going on. And kind of the piece that differentiates me is really my background, coming out as an educator and venture capitalist, just that there's some things there that I have that are tools, that are helpful. So, I'm data-driven, I'm future-focused, and I've got an open mind on any policy. And one of my big things is never letting good be the enemy of great. And a lot of the things that we're doing are really, really good, but are we really openly considering all of the alternatives? Have we just accepted good when we could have gone with great? I don't know. I wasn't certain when some of these decisions were made, and maybe this was the best possible decision, but that, that's something I'm gonna be involved in and make sure that we've got that devil's advocate saying, "Hey, I love what you're saying, but what else have we looked at? What other options might we have? Have we considered everybody's perspective?" And just trying to be that voice, because I am exactly the average Colleyville citizen. That's what I want to bring to the table.
George?
Mayor Newton, first off, I'd like to say I'm conservative. I'm not a moderate. I know I've spoken a lot about the low-density, but it means a lot to me. If we want to be like some of our neighboring communities, that can easily happen come May 8th, if we don't vote responsibly, protect what we have here in Colleyville. I want to continue the great work on Highway 26. That's something we've gotta continue. It's come along great, it looks great. I think everyone can agree here, but we want to bring in some good businesses. We have, our occupancy rate is through the roof right now, probably higher than it's ever been. Let's keep those good businesses and those entrepreneurial spirits that are attracted to Colleyville, let's keep them here, the ones that are here, and let's bring in more when we can. I think that maintaining our fiscal responsibility is important, and I think that that's all I want to do on council under the mayorship of Bobby Lemon. Thank you.
Randy?
Yes, my opponent supports a new homestead extension with no plans to fund it. I think it makes sense for some cities, but definitely not ours. It puts additional tax burden on our businesses, and we don't want that. The skate park in the northern gateway, I don't think really reflects what a majority of our citizens would want to see in that area. I want to keep us moving forward by supporting the current vision that our city council has now, keep taxes low and become a debt-free city. Local government serves the citizens and the businesses, and I want to represent everybody. Living in Colleyville's been an extreme blessing to my family, and I'm willing to volunteer my time to improve the quality of our community. I hope I can get your support. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. So, that's the end of the formal questions. Thank you very much. So, we have time for only one audience question, so I have one. It's gonna be a 15-second one, so it's gonna be short. And here it is. Under the Kelly administration, Glade Road was supposed to be wider with trails placed on people's personal property. Current council has stopped the land grab, but there is one question we need to answer. Do you plan to extend Glade Reconstruction further east past Pool and Jackson Road? And I think we should, Damon?
That's actually a pretty tough question, but I would, I would, actually, I would not support the expansion of it there. No, I would not.
Okay, Zach?
I haven't looked at enough data to see if it would be necessary. I don't, having driven on it fairly regularly, I don't think it would be. If traffic patterns demanded it, I would consider it, but I don't, I don't think that's really a mission.
George?
Having lived on that portion of Glade Road, I think there are enough thoroughfares with pool going north and south and heritage going north and south, where you don't probably have to have as much congestion as we have further, further west, so I would not support the expansion.
Randy?
I really don't want any more road construction on Glade Road.
We would not go past Jackson Pool Road. You know, when we took council, we actually reduced the impact on our neighbors. They're gonna put 10-foot trails in front of yards and do intimate domain. We would not do that. After we're through with that, I'm like, "Raining. I want a pro-construction break. I got $2.7 million in sidewalks ready to go this year."
Very good. Okay, so that's it. Thank you very much. You're a capable candidate, we really appreciate it.